Ladies and gentlemen, welcome everybody for attending the Monday, October 20 regular scheduled board meeting. Unfortunately Chairman Nickel could not be with us tonight and Commissioner Jaggers was unavoidably detained at his work and has come in a little late. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Rooks Matthews if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would remain standing please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's pray. Our Father, we do thank for this day. We thank for this opportunity we have to come to be about the affairs of our citizens in our county. We thank you for these commissioners who give their time to serve and for the staff that served the county and its citizens and worked so hard to do so each day. We just ask your blessing on each one that's here tonight and be with us and guide us as we discuss the affairs of the county. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Everybody would remain standing at this time. We're going to our presentation for of heroes' remembrance.
Any of your family.
Yeah, any of the family and friends that would like to stand with Ernest McNeil?
They're here.
Okay, they're all here? Okay. Today we recognize Ernest C. McNeil, Private First Class, Bronze Star with V Device for Valor, for heroism in connection with military operations against a hostile force on 6th October, 1967. On this date, Private First Class McNeil was serving as a Grenadier on an ambush patrol near Lake. As the unit was moving into position, a large Vietcong force employing grenade launchers, small arms, and automatic weapons opened fire on them. Several men were wounded in initial barrage because of relentless enemy fire. They could not be treated by medical aidmen. With complete disregard for his personal safety, Private First Class McNeil exposed himself to hostile fire and moved to a forward position. He placed suppressive fire onto the insurgents which enabled a medical aidman to reach the casualties. When his comrades moved online with him, he entered the Vietcong kill zone and assisted in treatment and evacuation of the wounded men. Although repeatedly exposed to insurgent fire, he refused to seek cover until he was sure that all casualties had been moved to safety. His courageous actions undoubtedly saved the lives of several fellow soldiers. Private First Class McNeil's outstanding display of aggressiveness, devotion to duty, and personal bravery is in keeping with the finest traditions of the military service and reflects great credit upon himself, the first infantry division in the United States Army. In addition to receiving the Bronze Star with Valor, he has received a Combat Infantry Badge and Purple Heart. This time, commissioners will present you a certificate of recognition which reads, "The certificate is proudly presented to Ernest C. McNeil. On the 20th October, your name and citation that appear on the Harlan County Wall of Heroes and will remain so forever is part of the history of Harlan County is being duly recognized for your act of heroism. While serving in the United States Armed Forces, we as a county come together to commend you for your actions and dedication to our great nation." Presentation to certificate.
a moment of privilege and recognize two dignitaries tonight. First is Mr. Danny Moody, Chairman of our local Board of Elections, and Representative Joe Pike, who is here from the North Carolina House of Representatives. At this time, we'll move on to consider additions and deletions to the published agenda.
Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agendas published.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. We have a special guest with us tonight, Dr. William Downs, President of Campbell University. If you would, sir, your floor is yours.
With some humility that I follow a war hero, but I'll do my best, folks. Good evening, commissioners, good evening, fellow citizens. Thank you for giving me a few moments to formally introduce myself and to reintroduce Campbell University to you. And in my brief remarks, I want to extend an offer of renewed partnership between our university and the county as we look forward to our shared future. I want to say that I am ending my day here at this meeting with Harlan County, but I began my day also with Harlan County. This morning, we had county emergency services on campus. Larry Smith, Ryan Dawson, and Zach, I didn't get Zach's last name, but they were all on campus to talk with us and to plan some tabletop emergency simulation exercises. They did such fantastic job, I said I'd come here tonight and brag on them. Really appreciate that group helping make sure that Campbell has the safest campus in all of North Carolina. A quick bio, I began my service as the sixth president of Campbell University on July 1st. That's the sixth president in 138 years at Campbell, so it's fairly daunting to step into those big shoes. I'm a Raleigh native. My wife Kim is a Raleigh native. We've got family in the area. My sister lives in Fuquay. My dad turns 97 next week. He still lives in Cary. We call this home. And I just wanted you to know that the new president of Campbell University cares a lot about this community, cares a lot about this part of North Carolina because this is our home. I've spent more than 30 years in higher education. I have worked at three public state universities, and now Campbell is the third private university where I have worked. And what has become apparent to me in working at private universities is that we need to do more of what I'm doing right now, reminding people in the community that private universities have a public mission, and that we don't want to hide behind our walls, that we want to work with you, for you, and alongside you. So Campbell University is a private university with a very public mission, and that is why I am here tonight. The term I use is Campbell should be your indispensable partner, should be your go-to partner for everything. I spent five years at East Carolina University, and one thing I learned at ECU is that school saw itself as a catalyst for regional transformation and economic development. They used to say out there at ECU that if it burned down or shut down, that the community would build it back the next day because they needed it. We want Campbell to be seen the same way. We don't want to burn down. We don't want to be shut down, but we want you to see us as indispensable partners for Harlan County's future. I wanted to share with you a few quick numbers, just by way of reintroducing Campbell to you. 5,000 students at Campbell enrolled this fall. We enroll more North Carolina students than any other private college or university. Think about that for a minute. That's a major point of pride for us. 55,000 living alumni, of which 2,924 currently reside in Harlan County. Forty-seven freshmen in our freshman class this fall are from Harlan County. That's a number that's not as big as it should be, and that's one of the things we're going to be working on. We have a total of 360 students enrolled at our university at all levels who call Harlan County home. We are the county's largest private employer with over 800 full-time employees. The most recent data I could find, 2023, said the university paid over $71 million in salaries to those employees, many of whom call Harlan County home. It's estimated that our university has a $500 million annual economic impact right here in this backyard. So again, we care about what we're providing. I wanted to make sure that everybody in the room knows, and for the record, Campbell has a lot of stuff that can help move the county forward. Engineering, nursing, a world-class business school, physician's assistant program, a school of pharmacy, a med school, a law school in Raleigh. We have a golf course. We also have one of only 16 PGA golf management programs in the United States. We are home to the first undergraduate trust and wealth management program in the United States. Twenty-one NCAA Division One athletic teams right here in your backyard. High-level competition, NCAA Division One, right here. That's a big pull attractant for people as they think about where they want to live, work, play. We've got music, we've got theater, we've got all the performing arts you could ever want in terms of what you want from your quality of life. And I'd like everybody in the room to know, we're going to do a very aggressive job letting the world know that even though the sticker price for an undergraduate education at Campbell University is $42,000, the average student pays only 30% of that. We have a 70% average discount rate after need and merit. Our university's in the process of writing a strategic plan. After we write that strategic plan, we're going to write a master plan. They haven't thought about their physical space, their land, since 2004. I think that's very important, especially as you're working on a greenway, is that we work in tandem with you on our master plan. And then 2026, 2027, we will launch the most comprehensive campaign, fundraising campaign, in the 138-year history of the university. So we plan on raising some dollars to do some important things on that campus. This is my invitation to you. If there's anything we can do to help you attract business to the county, we'd love to be at the table. Where I come from, other universities and other counties, we have offered tuition remissions as an incentive to businesses coming into the county. If they want their employees to get a university education, their children to get a university education, Campbell can do that at a discounted rate. I'd love to talk to the county at some point in the future about a hotel. I think that'd be a win-win for the county and for the campus. I'd love to talk to the county at some point in the future about a pool. We have a swimming pool that could use some upgrade and love, and I think maybe the county doesn't necessarily have an overabundance of that asset, and so we might find a win-win there. We talked as a group in the past hour about an amphitheater and the way that music brings people together. I think that's another point in the future where we might be able to collaborate. You folks are probably all familiar with the Golden Leaf Foundation. Scott Hamilton from the Golden Leaf Foundation visited with me two weeks ago, said, "You have not asked for money from us since 2012. It's time for you to ask for money." Workforce development, rural economic advancement, that's what we can partner on with money from Golden Leaf. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know I'm here. Started here three months ago. Campbell's open for business. Campbell wants to partner with the county, and I hope we can find some win-win opportunities in the very near future. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for the public comment period. Each presenter gets two, three minutes for a total of 30 minutes, if we have that many. There won't be any personal attacks or profanity tolerated. Okay? The first person to sign up was Mr. Glenn Mahone. Did I pronounce that right? I didn't, I'm sorry.
No problems. People have had problems with that all my life.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me here. Good afternoon to everyone else. My name is Glenn Mahone. I live at 230 East Lillington Street in Antioch. Been there for a little over 11 years. My chat with you is about another hero of sorts. He is our county's namesake, Mr. Cornelius Harlan. And I think he deserves a little bit more than just a highway marker and a couple of street signs to show exactly who he was and how important his life was here in North Carolina. And it is true that he did not live here, and he was not around when the county became a county. He probably never slept here. It's possible he traveled through here many, many years ago. His contribution to our state is incredible. He was de facto governor in 1765. I'm sorry, 1774. And basically, when the British were kicked out of positions of political authority, he became the chairperson. He's made a lot of contributions to our country's history. And of course, as July approaches pretty quickly, next year is the anniversary of our independence. He helped deal with two documents, very important, Articles of Confederation as well as the Halifax Resolves. He's actually a chairperson involved in dealing with the Halifax Resolves. He's also a member It's, it was a sea of litter from one end to the other for over a mile, and, uh, it is really going to be hard work to get this up. These are some of the pictures that I shot today. Deputy Ivy came out to observe, and we found some mail in the, in the litter. Um, so he'll work on that. It seems like landfills and, and the convenience centers, the roads leading to them is a focus point of litter. It's not so much our rural roads, it, yes, they do get litter, but not like the convenience centers. So I'm asking for your help, not to, um, increase the budget or anything like that. We need to think about how citizens can be resolved in helping us with this litter problem around these convenience centers and these landfills. So I need your help with that. Uh, litter is a sign of economic problems, and it seems like today, uh, people having problems paying their rent and their food and so forth, so this are signs of litter. So I need your help in this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, James Thomas.
I'm a little loud to that microphone, if everybody, if you can't hear me, let me know. All right? Commissioners? Yes, ma'am, huh? Yeah, it's going to be there. Um, let me orientate you to the map real quick. This is Western Harnett. The item that is traced is county property that I am asking the county to take into consideration and make it into a community, community park or an events-type arena. That's Highway 87, right across the street is, in the lower half is the Walmart, in the upper half, all that cluster is the new housing area at Lexington Spring Lake. Right across the street, they're building more houses. Um, how do we get people to come to Spout Springs? I know our mailing address is either Cameron, Lillington, or Sanford, but that is historically Spout Springs. How do we get people to come to it? We have to give them an activity. How do we address the, the, the youth issue, right? I'm not saying all kids are bad, but if we don't have a place for them to go, you watch them go to, uh, the Sheets. They walk down the street, they hang out in the Sheets. What do they do during the summertime? A community park and a community event, right? For the month of February, we've got Black History Month, we got March, we got Women's History Month, Irish-American History Month, we got National Tartan Day. This month in Fayetteville, they held the Scottish Highland Games. Does anybody know when the last time we had Scottish Highland Games in a county that was founded by the Scots? Hmm, right? That would be there. We got Appreciation Month in May, we got Asian Pacific Month. These are all opportunities for sponsors to set up, bring people to visit us, to utilize our restaurants, our stores, and also potentially move into our area, right? And it's not just the daytime or the weekends, right? If you belong to an astronomy club, we have what's called very low light pollution, right? If any of y'all been out in Western Harnett, you know at nighttime, it ain't that, it ain't that bright, right? We keep our lights down, right? We usually out there hunting, right? But for astronomers, that gives them an opportunity to look at all the different celestial events that occur, right? Um, I don't know what else to say. I, today, before this, I pulled up the Harnett County Events page.
One minute.
Right, one minute, thank you, sir. Of this, three pages off of Facebook that says what you can do in the local area. Um, we had two that were in Spout Springs, but they're listed as Sanford. That's the Boo and Brews, so I can go get drunk, right? Or the Annual Fall Fest in wickedly wonderful market, so I can spend some money, right? Is my minute up? Not yet?
About 30 seconds.
30 seconds! Should I use my laser pointer or just call it? I'll just call it. Thanks for the time, thanks for the opportunity, and I hope you all consider it, all right? It'd give that area, Western Harnett, Three Townships, and Spout Springs, a venue, a place not only to address an activity for our youth, right? But also so sponsors can come in, set up events, set up fairs, and bring people in, increase tourism, which then is a long, sustainable economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Kate Riker.
Say yes, sir. Hello. Hey, I'm proud of you. Um, I'm Kate Riker, and I, I live in northwest Harnett on River Road. I'm here to let you know about a situation that happened on October 10th. I think it's a serious situation and something that you would want to know about. Um, the fiber optic cable that runs down that road was cut in four different places. That was on October 10th. There are people who still do not have their service. We have ours because they've laid a temporary line across our yard. This is a bad time of the year for this to happen with school kids needing to have internet service. My neighbor works for Merck and works from home, and so she can't work, and she was told because it has to be run again under the road to her house that it could be two and a half weeks. Um, I'm telling you this because water taps were put in four places, and in those four places is where the fiber optic cable got cut. So there is a North Carolina law that says to call before you dig. So I think we need to make sure that our water department has policies, procedures, and plans in place to follow that because this is just the beginning of the development that we're going to see our way. This is for four houses that are going to be right on the road near me, there's six more behind me, um, so this is something we need to avoid. I looked at the industry estimates for repair of fiber optic cable. Turns out, it's a really big deal. I couldn't believe it. It's about $10,000 per cut. So this is $40,000. I suspect the county will be asked to pay for it, and I know this is not $40,000 you guys want to spend that way. So thank you very much. I hope you will pass this along, and maybe something can be done to prevent this from happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll pass that, please. This time, we close the public comment period and go to the county manager's report.
Chairman, the only thing I have, uh, besides needing approval of the budget amendments and the tax rebates and refunds, is a reminder there is no meeting next week. Our next meeting will be on November 3rd. Need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll approve the budget amendments as requested by the finance officer.
Motion have been made and properly seconded. Uh, how about tax refunds or rebates? Hmm? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Now about my tax refunds.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve tax re- rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator.
Second. Motion have been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Is there any new business to come before this body? Or is there a need for closed session, Mr. Chair, Council? No, Mr. Chairman. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm backing motion to adjourn.
All right, motion been made proper seconded, sound of the gavel, we will be adjourned.